Um, what we're going to do, we're gonna work on the logic just now a bit. And the first thing I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna just find a place where I can show my face to you guys. There you go. Now, if I press here, it should show my face. There we go. Okay, so what I want to do is, I wanna first tell you exactly the two methods um that are generally used for problem solving within computers. And then we're gonna try and do one or two problems and see how we solve that, and then we'll go into the specifics of pseudocode. Okay. So the two methods that we generally use is, believe it or not, very, very hard to come to hand. The one is called top-down. And the other one is called bottom-up. Okay, those are, those are the two methods. You can go look it up in Google and exactly what the differences are, okay? So what happens is, in computers, we have a concept called abstraction. Okay, let's see. Can Zani, do you know what abstraction is?
No, I don't.
Okay, anybody that can give you a thumbs up that knows what abstraction is? Nobody. Hey. When we think of a human being, okay, our brains are very good at abstractions. Okay, when you think of a, of a human being, you think about a human being, okay? You don't think about two eyes, a mouth, a nose, a heart, lungs, two legs, and two feet, and two, on ten toes, and ten, we don't think like that. We abstract all that into one abstract concept, which is called a human being, or a person. Just the same as a male and a female, that's abstraction. So we as human beings take a very difficult concept, we generalize it, and we abstract it, and we abstract it away. Now, the idea of top-down designers, what we do is, we work with abstraction. So we start with a really big abstraction, and then we work from the big abstraction, we go down into details, 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 until we get to the final results with all the actual details. Okay, so if you think about something like, I don't know, if you think about something like a phone, okay, we think phone, which is the abstraction, there you go, okay, but to have a phone, I need a cable to carry the thing, I need some kind of power source, I need a screen, I need all that. Okay, so each one of those, but each one of those are also abstraction. So if you think of a screen, if you think of a phone, you think, okay, a phone has a screen. Okay, so the screen is an abstraction, but the screen consists of um all kinds of other components, and then that component has got a further abstraction, and that component's got a further abstraction, that component is further abstraction, okay? So when you do problem solving, okay, except for the steps, you have to think in terms of, I abstract it, and then, then I go deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper down, and eventually I end up with pseudocode. Okay, we don't start with pseudocode. Okay, and what happens is pseudocode is an abstraction for an actual algorithm. So we take the pseudocode, we take some of the abstraction away, and then we have a programming language. And then within the programming language itself, it takes some of the abstraction away, and then we have a machine code, and we have have machine code, we take some of the abstraction away, and we end up with um um actual numbers, and we take the numbers abstraction away, we add, end up with bits. And when we have bits, we take some of the abstraction away, and we literally sit with on and off signals. Okay, but we don't need to think about on and off signals, because as human beings, we can abstract all that away, and we just think about the program, or just think about pseudocode. So that's the idea behind pseudocode is, we can abstract the idea, we can abstract the algorithm away from what is actually gonna happen on the computer. And once we've got the abstraction, then we can fill in different details and write it in Python and C++, and it really doesn't matter which the next abstraction level is, we have this abstraction level that we can apply everywhere. Okay, so that is the first concept that you guys need to understand. Thumbs up if you understand, thumbs down if this is a concept that you're struggling with. Okay. Everybody seems to be okay with it. Okay. Now, in, in computers, now, to define an algorithm, an algorithm really is a mathematical concept. Believe it or not, it comes from maths. Most of computer science actually comes from math. All that an algorithm is, and I think there was a question in there, is, let's see, um, Harat, what is an algorithm? If you wanna define an algorithm?
apologies, I was quickly busy with the, with the quiz.
Doesn't matter.
My understanding for an algorithm is uh basically a step-by-step instruction on what you want the program to do.
That's perfect, that's exactly what an, what an algorithm is. So if you take uh a recipe, and you follow the instructions from the beginning to the end, that is an algorithm. There's even certain maths problem that you solve by an algorithm, you take this step, then you take the next step, then you take the next step, and then texting. So all an algorithm is, we literally write down what's, what's the step that you take, and you take the steps one for one for one for one. Okay, now, in computer science, or computers in general, there is some basic constructs that is necessary for an algorithm to be called an algorithm. Okay, but there's also certain functions that a computer needs to be perform to be able to perform any instruction that any computer's ever, ever done. Okay, there's a set of basic instructions. If you build a computer that can handle those basics instructions, then it can literally do anything that any other computer ever has done, because all computers can only do those couple of instructions. Okay, now the instructions is the stuff that we actually did in this module. Okay, so one of them is, we have to have the ability to store and retrieve information. Okay, and you guys can all see what the, that, I'm, I'm assuming you can see what I'm writing, and not read what I'm writing there at all, but uh let's do this. Has to be able to store and retrieve information, so that's the first thing. So Quentin, if you're thinking of store and retrieve, in terms of pseudocode, what are the commands to do that? And we did that in chapter two or three, I think, already.
So I'm a bit nervous with this, but let me just think, it's stored to store it, it's just gonna also, I obviously think about arrays when you store data.
A bit, bit, array is one way to do it. A variable is another way.
Oh, yeah, and of course, uh, okay, our variable. Uh, we can store, I guess, in a string.
You can write it out, you can store it, you can store it in different ways, but the basic principle is there, you can store it, and you can retrieve it, and the ways that we can retrieve it is, we did, we did the read operation, which retrieves it from a file, we did the, what, what is the one that we get, enter operation, that gets it from the keyboard?
Yeah, and what about display? Does display also retrieve? Is it part of that?
Display is actually just an output. So, display, yeah, so display is a bit of, if you think in terms of a computer, and this is sort of outside the scope, but when you think in terms of computer, most computers got inputs, in other words, they've got some way to pull information from the outside world, and they've got some way to put, push information into the outside world. So most computers got this, and they used to, they used to discuss this, and you had to learn all this, but, and you have the computer here. So there's always some way to pull information into a computer, and some way for, to pull out of, out of a computer. Okay, and that input can be anything, you can think of, it could be a mouse that you're moving around, it could be a keyboard, it could even be a file on a desk. Um, you know, it could be your fingerprint, it could, you name it, everything that you can think of that a computer can, can, can use as an input, you can put there. And then outputs can also be a lot of stuff. I mean, outputs could, lit, could be something like display, which displays something on the screen, it could be a picture that it shows you, it could be something like moving an arm over in a computer. Okay, it could be um switching stuff on and off. Okay, your, your um power, for example, has got a computer in it, and what it does is, you put the, put the, put the thing in, you switch on the, the gear, it, it checks some, it checks the, the um your key fob, then the ESU goes, oh, there's a key fob. And then it's, then it says signals, and then it's got craploads of signals that sends out to the, to the engine to start. And as your engine turns, three thousand revolutions a minute, you can work out how many seconds, um, it sends a hundred, two hundred signals a da, a second output to the, to the engine to do, to say what it's supposed to do. It literally, that's literally what it does. It measures where the engine is, and then it sparks, and it does all kinds of stuff, it just talks the whole time. Okay, it's very noisy, but that is just an output, and the key that you switch on is just an input. Um, your, your steering, where your steering is, is just an input, where your, where your uh where your petrol pedal is, where your brakes is, is just an input, and then the output would be the engines or whatever. Okay, but in pseudocode, we work mostly with enter and display. Okay, for the normal human interaction, and that is just inputs and outputs. Okay, so that is, that is, that is just a way for an algorithm to, to, to communicate with us, and for an algorithm to, to take the information. The algorithm itself considers this as just information that it gets. Okay, that is just part of the storage and the retrieval. Now, old computers, these days, they don't do it, but really, old computers didn't even have that. Old computers, they used to just map that to memory, so instead of these days, you read it off ports, but those days, you literally just took a, took a memory address, and you pulled it out of memory, and it was just a memory, memory address, and it looked like a variable, you just pulled the variable and it was there. These days, you have to read it from ports. Okay. So the two things that it, so it has to be able to store and retrieve information. Okay. Next thing it needs to be able to do, okay, it needs to be able to do arithmetic. Okay. The next thing it needs to do, it needs to be able to make, make decisions. Okay, normally, these are two steps, but it's supposed to be able to compare best stuff. Compare com compare stuff. And then it's supposed to be able to branch. Fingers up if you guys know what branching is. Nothing, okay. Remember, an algorithm is just a set of steps. So we've got step one, step two, step three, step four, step five, step six, okay? Okay, what branching is, now I've got thousands of steps. Branching is the ability to say, when I get to this step, I want to jump to that step. When I get to that step, I want to be able to jump to that step. Okay, that's just, that's called branching. Okay, and that goes along with um, uh Quentin, yes?
Sorry, my question, um, branching, so I first check the first condition or the first step, and then if that condition is true, then I go to the next step. And then after that, I go to the next step?
Yeah, so, so what happens is, in the computer itself, it'll use it. We don't think about it like that, because we have an if condition, we put it then and then, and it sort of hides it, it abstracts it away from what we think. But in the background, okay, in the actual assembly language, yeah, it doesn't have an if-then statement, it's got a condition, and then the next step is, based on the condition, you branch. Based on that condition, so, so an if-then statement would look something like this. Okay, and so you'll have, for example, you'll have your if statement then, and then based on the condition, you'll have a branch there, and then the rest of the conditions would be, and then here, it'll have a branch, because now what happens, it doesn't know where to go, so now it branches over that part, and it does, it gets very complicated. But the, the, the long and the short of an if statement is just two statements, it's, it's, it's a comparison with a branch. Okay. So if you've got these elements, your computer can do anything any other computer has ever been able to do. Okay, now you should be able to recognize some of these. So we did the read and write stuff, we did the enter and the display stuff, okay? We did the variable assignment stuff, that's the store and retrieve. We did the arithmetic stuff, where you can add a plus b, and we can assign it to c, so that it can do. We've got um assignment is, is one of them, but that sort of goes with that. Okay, um, we did the make decisions part, so we've got an if statement, we've got a while statement, we've got a loop or a for statement, and we've got an until statement. All four of those are branching instructions. I think they call it something else in the book. Um, can somebody remember what they call it in the book? Just get the book open here. Okay, we are not, we're not doing math, sorry, let me just go to uh, here, this book, this book. Yeah, they, they call it selection and control, they call it control structures, branching control structures are basically the same thing. Well, you'll hear, when you talk to very advanced people, they talk about branching, or people that's been in the industry for a while, and then um when you talk to newer guys that just got into industry, they'll talk about control structures. Um, but it's the same thing, control and branching, it depends on where you are on the levels. If you on the upper levels, we took, only abstraction is control structures, when you're talking about the actual computers is branching. Okay. So that is the principles that we're working on, and that's what they tried to do in this class. That's what, that's where all this comes from. Is that they are trying to teach you all the basic principles. Okay, that is written um for, for computers. Okay, and that is why we learn all this. So this is not random. This is, this is the basic principles that you're gonna use over and over and over and over again. And that's why you need to know these structures, and how, how they work. Now, what I want to do is, does anybody have a question that they struggled to, to do in the book, or that they can give to me? So I can work through it, and we can do a bit of top-down, or uh, top-down design, and you can see how it works.
Quentin, do you have access? Wait, sorry, I just wanna ask a question, if anyone here has access to previous um uh tests, questions, I think those would be great. But that's just my view. I don't have any questions on my end, though. You can go, Quentin.
Yeah, I, I have one question, I will copy and paste it now. So I, I've, I've struggled with arrays, I started to get a hang of it, but I still struggle with it.
That's fine, it's not a problem. Some of the right questions that they had in the book is quite difficult, it wasn't easy questions, eh? I remember the arrow stuff, when I, when I started working through those, because I went just, oh, this is gonna take forever, because they take long to do.
Yeah, do you think they'll ask us any complex questions pertaining to arrays?
Yes, they will, they are, they are bastards. Um, what they get, what they tend to do is, um, they will, they will charge you, so you can, you can, you can, you will get a question from the last two chapters. From the la, the work that we did in week six and week seven, there will be a question about that. Period. They will put a question in. Okay. See if I can if you guys can see this. Where is it? I'm gonna go to write to there, go.
Okay, okay, was, did you see the question in the chat box? Quentin's question?
Yes, yes, I'm working through it now. I see it's not displaying for some reason. What am I doing wrong? Let me just change this uh, very, very where are we? Window? Okay, here's the question. It's a bit small, I don't know if you guys can read it, I'll read it out loud. Um see if I can make it so that it's a bit easier to read. So the question is, you've got two parallel arrays storing the following information for seven employees, okay? First array is a one-dimensional array, contains seven employee numbers. The two arrays is a two-dimensional array that contains the basic monthly salary in the first column, the bonus in the second column. Okay, and the net salary in the third column. Therefore, every row in two-dimensional array will contain the basic monthly salary, bonus, and net salary for employee, whose number is stored in there, and then it broke off there, you'll have to just give me the rest. Quentin, you can just um print, just um copy the rest to me, please.
I will do it now, just a second. Okay, from where, we did a stop, stored in the, let me just see.
At the P A, it says stored in the P.
Well, parallel array in the same position, okay, yes. Missed that part.
Okay, now what, what must, what must we do? What's the actual question?
Well, let me see this.
Oh, there it is, parallel array, and say please, okay?
I'll get a question, I'll go, I'll just ask a question, ask.
Yeah, what is, what, what does it want you to do with that?
Well, I need to write an algorithm.
Yeah.
That stores the information of seven employees, okay?
Okay, so it needs to pull it, okay, so, so let's, let's do the top-down design. So the top-down design means we're gonna go to the biggest abstraction level that we possibly can, okay, and then we're gonna drill down. So what we basically have is, we have an employee. Okay, and for each employee of seven employees, we have the employee number. Okay. And we've got the monthly salary. Okay. And a bonus. And the net salary. Make some space here. Okay, so that's your first, that is your abstraction that you're working with. Okay. So now we go back to the question and say, okay, fine. Um, what if this information is relevant? Everything seems to be relevant. What information is not relevant, get rid of it. Okay. Now they said two parallel arrays, that is a concept that they taught in the book, and anybody tell me what a parallel array is? Tabang?
Uh, I'm gonna try to say, parallel array, it's, it's, it's for the for I think to, the first array stores values in a column, and the second array um store values in a row. If I'm not mistaken?
Not quite like that. Okay, so all, all a parallel array is, is if you've got an array, array one. And I've got a second array. Array two. These arrays are related. Meaning, the first element here is related to the first element there. The second element here is related to the second element there. So for example, say I store in array one, I have an array called um, say, for example, name. And I've got an array called student number. Okay, so what I do is, in this one, I store the names. Peter and Cindy and Tabang, and whoever it is, and in this one, I store your student number. Okay, all a parallel array is, that if I go and say, name one, and I ask, and I did this, display name one, display student number one, they relate to each other, they're basically the same information. You see, you store an element, one, you can, you store the name, and that's what a parallel array is, it's a concept that you need to understand, it's part of what you need to learn. Okay. So what they basically say is, they've got two arrays, which are parallel arrays, the one array stores some information, the other array stores some other, other information. So what did they give us? They said, in the second sentence, they say, the first array is a one-dimensional array that contains seven employee numbers. This array okay, contains employee numbers. Numbers. It's one, two, three, four, five, and five, six, nine, seven, eight, whatever, and seven, eight, nine, zero. Okay. So the one array stores employee numbers. Okay, so we got that one. Move on to the next one. The second one said, the second array is a two-dimensional array that contains the basic monthly salary in the first column, the bonus in the second column, and the net salary in the third column. Okay, what does that mean? Anisha, Cindy. Interaction. Firstly, thumbs down if you don't know what a multi-dimensional array is.
In a multi-dimensional array, should all of the data be related, or it's not a must?
Well, it doesn't have to be related, but generally it is. As a programmer, you decide if it is or not. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the question a, as if you're third year, okay? It doesn't have to be related, because It doesn't have to be related because there are systems that contain information and errors that are not related. Okay, but for the purposes of I T P L A, first year, they always relate.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay.
Alright, I think Harold had his hand up.
Harold?
Apologies, I don't wanna disturb the flow here. Um. But would you say? It. Would you say uh my thinking is? Uh, can I get? Your is mulakuma in, in, in most of Pratapasatragant, sorry?
Yeah, problem African, I cannot translate.
So you say, I could know any array story, so okay, I've been, I was watching this array story like this, um, as you demonstrated with the pictures. But it kinda, uh, it kinda speaks to my accounting Excel mind. Would you say that? Uh, those two are relatable concepts, like a table in an Excel. Could be the same, so like, if you have in column one, two, and three, you've got a list of employees, the. Their salary, next to their salary, there's a bonus, their, their targets are there. And then if you use like uh your formulas in Excel, it. The, is, is that, is it, is it like an entertain, interchangeable concept?
So in, i- i- if you think in terms of the Excel, Excel purpose, what you would have is. Um, two parallel era- arrays, like having two workbooks. So you've got one workbook and a second workbook. And they have at the same, same field on the, on the two workbooks, they've got the same information or related to information. While um a multi dimensional array is exactly what you get in Excel. So a multiple dimensional array. Okay, is an array that got, that's got multiple columns. And multiple rows. So a single dimensional is like a single row within um Excel. Multi dimensional is exactly what you get in, in Excel. Excel is typically a two dimensional array. Which means it's got rows. And it's got columns. Then Excel, you, you'll name them A one and B two. In computer science, we don't do that. In computer science, we literally just go, um, we just give this one numbers. And we give that one numbers. And then we do that, we do the math thing, where we say, the first one refers to the numbers that goes down like that. And the second one refers to the numbers that go like that, that, that direction. Sorry, I did make a mistake here, I apologize. I don't wanna confuse you. So let's just do this quickly.
Does that mean it has to start with a zero?
It has to start with zero, yeah. I just wanna make sure that it starts with a zero. Because otherwise, um, people go, oh, why is it T one? Okay. So, so I can refer to, so when I refer to this stuff here, it's very simple. I just literally refer to. Um. Zero, one, two, three. So if I refer to employee number, I go. Employee. Number, number one, which means we look, talk to you like that, exactly like in Excel. Exactly the same thing. If you have this one here, this is now multi dimensional array. And that's, that's called a salary info. Salary info. Okay, so if I say I wanna refer to salary. Info. Um, say for example, one comma two, then I'm referring to one comma two. I'm referring to that, that item there. Okay, so this is, this is the difference for the guys that didn't know what a multi dimensional array is. It's an array that you, that you. Attaches, got basic two dimensions, got, it's got both columns, and it's got rows. So the question said that we have the employee number in the one array. And then we've got a multi dimensional array that contains salary information, and let me see what they say. Um, then, then of course they have to confuse you. So they say, in the first column. Which is this column. Which you call zero. Cause they have to confuse us, they can't just make things simple, okay? Okay, in the zero column, okay? That one is called. Basic. Monthly. Salary. The second column. Is called bonus. And the third column. Is called net. Salary. Okay. So that's what they created. They said, this is. The two structures that they created, they create an array with, with one dimension, and then they create a multi dimensional array. And then they said in this, that they are parallel arrays. In other words. This zero here. Let's put Quentin in there, just because we can. So Quentin is, is very special, he's employee number zero, zero, one. Okay. That. There relates to this column here. So those are attached to each other. So that's the structure that they gave us. Okay? Anybody that's still struggling up until now, that doesn't get the difference between a single array and a multi dimensional array? Okay? Now. So the basic principles is this. If I were to write, I want to know. What is employee? Number. Five. I'll just go look at this. This array here, we start at zero, we count down until we get to number five. Whatever's in that column is basically the number here. If you work with a multi dimensional array, same principle. So we've got salary. Info. And I want to know. One comma. One, for example, I count down zero, one, so we're looking at that column here. And then I have to look at number one, and that's zero, one, so I'm looking at whatever's in that field there. That's the arrays work. Okay, so we've, we've gotten from the big, big abstraction, we said, we, we have an employee up here. So that was our big abstraction that we started with. Then we said, okay. We take that and we break this employee up into an array that represents that. And an array that represents that. So we've now conceptually said, there's an array that represents that, and arrow that represents that. So let's say, they asked us the following, they said, okay. First thing that you need to do is, we know we've got seven employees. Cause they give it to us. And they say, for those seven employees, you need to read in. Their name. You need, also the employee number, sorry. Employee. Number. And we need to read in. The other two, two information, which is the basic monthly salary. Monthly. Salary, and we have to read in. The net salary. Okay, and we need to read in the. Sorry, there's a bonus there as well, so. There, the next one is a bonus. Bonus. And only then we have the net salary. I'm assuming. The net salary will be that one plus that one, but they didn't say anything about that, right? So now we've gotten to the point where we say, okay, fine. We have another problem here, is that we need to do something with this data. We need to read this data in. So the abstraction is, we need to read the data in. So that's your abstraction. We need to, let's, let's make it like this. We need to calculate. The total. And we need to display the total. Okay, can you see that's a sec, that's an abstraction there? So now you can work through each one. You now decide which one of these abstractions you want to tackle first. Okay, so. We want to tackle the first abstraction, which is read. Data. That's your first abstraction that we want to tackle. So what do we need to do? If you want to tackle the read data. What do I need? If I need to read in seven employees. Um. Um. Details, what do I need to do? Come on, guy, any, anybody? Who is Kenzani? You're struggling with this stuff, you need to answer it.
Okay, so. We want to read data, correct?
Yeah.
So we're probably going to have to call it out. Um. Okay, no.
Relax, if you're wrong, you're wrong. Okay, I need to read seven people's. Data into the system, what do I need to do?
You have to call them out, okay? Oyas, I think someone, Oyazi, is it Oyazi?
Oyazi, do you?
Wouldn't you display a question asking them for that information and then get them to answer it?
Okay, so that's exactly what you would do. So that is, that is your, that is your read data that we're gonna abstract into two points. We're gonna go display, you done, display, and we're gonna s- s- put a nice message in there, okay? And then we are gonna enter. The specific information for an employee, so enter the employee information. Okay. Now generally. Okay, we want to do this how many times? Kenzani?
Well, probably seven times, right?
Allah! Okay. We have a construct that does something seven times. What is it called?
Wait, please repeat that.
We have a control structure.
Mm hmm.
That's very good at doing something exactly seven times.
I think it's a loop, is it?
Yes, which, which one of? Yes, the for loop. So what you can do is, you say, if you're gonna do something exactly seven times, we can use something called a for loop.
Hmm. Okay.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna teach you a bit of good, good practice. Um, you don't need to do this in exam. I do this because otherwise I just get confused, okay? So what I do is. I say, I don't work with seven. I go and I say, my number. Of employees. Is seven. And then I work with that instead of that, okay? That, that's just good practice because it happens is, if I need to change the system to suddenly work with ten employees, I go to one place and I change it. Okay? Now, for the purposes of this specific subject. Please. Put comments in all the, or everywhere. So you'll do a comment. Um. Store. Number of employees. Or. Later. Use. Put a comment in there, then you take this part. See if I can do the copy and pasting, I haven't been able to do that yet. Copy. No, it doesn't work. Ah, it doesn't matter, I can just redo it. I will figure out my, my lap, my thingy at some stage. Okay, this you don't need to do, I do it because. Um. Uh, and number. You'll see why I do it later on. Equals seven. Okay, then we have a for loop. So, somebody put their hands up, who wants to do a for loop? So the for loop starts with four. What's the format? Kenzani, what's the format for the for loop? You know, guys need to know this, right? You cannot wonder. You don't know. Quentin, yes?
Um, for I in zero to six. That's normally, I think, how we would do it. I do, and then we, we input a command.
And then you put the commands in here, then you use next year. You need to know this format. So you need to know your if format. Your for format. Your while format. Your um until format. You just need to know them off by heart. Now, you'd need to literally learn them, make sure, you need to know how to assign a variable, okay?
And I'm, so it must be next because the for loop runs and it's gonna go to the next one. We can't say loop.
No, for uses next, it's for next is the format. Um, while and until uses loops. Okay. Okay.
So, I just have a question.
Yes.
Does it have to be I, or could you say for uh number of employees equals?
It could literally be anything.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, the, we, we tend, if your loop is very small. Okay, very, very small and simple, okay? You would use I and J and K, cause you can see the beginning of the loop. Okay, and you can see the end of the loop, and there's four or five here. If your loop becomes long and complicated. Do not use I. Use exactly what you say, use a descriptive web. Me personally. When I write exams, I would not use an I there. I would use some other, and other, other thing there. Um, but you can use I, but in, in real life, when you actually take this into your work. You only use an I and a J when it's a simple thing. That you, four or five lines of loop, but if the loop becomes complicated. Um, you, you describe the loop, the loop structure. So in this case, I would probably say. Um. Well, we already used number of employees, yes, we have to look at another one that we do. So um. I would use something like element or, you know, um. I don't know, let's just use current. Employee. Equals zero two. And then I go. I would do this, you guys, please don't, don't need to. Okay? And then what happens next, Kenzani, you need to do what?
Uh, may I please just listen for this one?
No, you cannot. I have to force you to think about these things because if you actually know it, you just think you don't.
Alright, so I probably have to. Go on with the display and enter, right? So I'd say, display. Um, is it imp, imp name? Imp name?
Employee, employee number.
Employee, what's that again? Uh, employee. Oh, let me just go to the question.
Now the question says it's employee number, okay? And then we have enter. And then.
You're breaking up, so I can't, I did not.
Um, sorry, okay?
Employee numbers, so display.
Enter employee number, that's fine. That's fine. Enter employee number and then enter. And then up here, we've got the array. And we say. Enter into employee number. I'm sorry, they use the brackets. We use that there. Um. I'm gonna change it to current element, just cause, just cause it makes more sense to me, guys. Element. Okay. What does that do? That literally goes, and it asks seven times, it prints seven times because we're counting seven. Enter the employee name, enter the employee number. Okay, so we have now done the first part of reading that array, and we are still having the blue array that we need to do. Again. Again, in the test, you don't need to do this. But this is what I would do when you actually write a professional program. I would go and say, I'm gonna define basic salary. So let me just put it in a different color. So I would literally do this. I'll go. Basic salary. Element or whatever, like that is zero. Bonus one. And then. Um, net salary.
Uh, apologies, Akubus. This in yellow, this is the initialized variable stage.
Yeah, I did, I just initialized this, this, well, these are gonna be constants, they're not gonna change. But there's no way for me to tell that they're constants, okay? And the only reason I do this, you don't have to do this, please don't, you don't have to do that. If you can keep yourself straight, don't do that. The only reason I do that because it makes it easier for me later on, because what I can do now is, I can now say, okay, fine. Yeah, we're gonna go enter. Now, we, we have to enter the persons. By salary. Okay, and that's gonna be salary info. So I have to go salary info. Which element? The current element. Men, comma, and then here you would put zero, one or two. In my case, I just go. Okay, because this to me is easier to work with. Then, uh, then I don't have to remember what the zero means, what the one means, what the two means, okay? If you press for time, don't do this, just go one, oh, one, two. You're not gonna lose marks if you don't do, don't do it this way. I do it because it's easier for me. Um, if you're writing big programs, there's so many things to remember, you don't wanna remember nonsense like that. So you just literally just. Give it a name.
So, so that will be the column header?
Yes. So I just use the column headers and then, then I don't have to put a one or two or three there. Okay, but that is exactly equivalent to, um, putting, for example, a one there. Okay, that is equivalent to. It's equivalent to, except to this. Exactly the same thing. Okay, because it's a constant. Enter, and then of course, I'm not gonna do this because it's too much effort. You will have it all display in there as well. Okay, um, I'll, I'll give you some tips in terms of good practice just now. Again.
I got a quick question. I just wanna find out, so this would basically be like, uh. Let's say for instance, in a program, um, it was, there will be. There will be a message and then there will be like these text box, text boxes if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, generally, in this case, you would use it, um, uh, for the algorithm, in, in this case. Yes, think in terms of eventually where we're gonna go, if you're gonna do it in a. A proper programming language or you do it on a webpage, that's exactly what's it's gonna be. You're gonna have a text box and the display is just gonna be the text at the top and the enter part would just be the box where you type things in. In this case, yeah.
I just have a question regarding that. So would, so would it mean if you say, display employee number and then enter employee number and then. That, after you've done that, that will take you to the next page where we'll say, display again and enter again?
Not, not necessarily. Th- this is, this is, again, this is an abstraction. This is an abstraction. How you finally implement this in a computer? You can implement it in one page, you can implement the multiple places, it doesn't matter. Okay, if we did it, um, you did ITLSA. So if we did it in ITLSA, where is? My thingy here? If we did it in ITLSA, we, we would literally just do, um. It will print it underneath each other. So if you do it in C sharp, C plus plus, it'll print it next to each other. If you do it something like in JavaScript. We have a webpage, um, you will have a webpage with, 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 um, bars that you enter. If you do it, it really depends. Um, this is still an abstraction. So remember that this is still an abstraction. In other words, the way that's eventually gonna be implemented is completely different. We're just interested in terms of. We're gonna display something, we're gonna get some information, we're gonna display something, we're gonna eh, get some information. The final version will look completely different. Okay, but it's just to get the logic, it's to abstract the logic out. Okay, so a couple of good, good practices. So this is. Good practice. Okay, you'll see when the guys, when, uh, when you look at experience programmers work, you'll see they do this a lot. What we would typically do here is, when we say, display employee number, we would also do the following. We will probably not do that. We'll put the employee number. Current element. Okay, again, this is good practice because you have to think from a, from a perspective of the user. He's gonna be confused that I enter six people, that I enter two people, that I, what did I do? So every time you say, please enter. So and so number third stuff, okay? That's why we have the display here so that they can remember what they need to enter. Okay? Are you with, Kenzani? I'm worried about you. Where are you? Have you disappeared now?
No, I am here. I'm just listening to you guys. I got disconnected earlier, but I'm now back and, yeah.
Are you, are you with us? Is there anything here that you don't understand?
No, I understand, but can you just give me a summary of the enter, 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 enter part? I see, see, the thing with programming is that I understand it, but I cannot think about it.
Okay, but that's why I wanted you to, but we'll, we'll work through this, we'll work through this problem very slowly just now, okay?
Okay.
So, so that is, that's how you would typically. So typically, they'll expect you to do like a for loop, for loop from zero to six. Um, enter it into each element and then you would do something with it. In this case, we want to. Get the total. So we want to work out what the total bonus, the total salary and the total whatever is, okay? In this case, we can put that calculation right in there and it's gonna still work. Because we know that it's a seven, but in general, you'll have a separate loop. That goes and just adds, adds all this together. Okay, so let's just do this.
Let me just ask one more question about arrays. So the premise with arrays is that depending on the question, we then have to make. The judgment on what type of loop we're going to put in. Hmm, got it.
Yes, this is exactly what you're going to have to do. And what is the rules for the different loops?
What, what are the rules for the what?
Different loops. We've got, we've got, we've got three, three loops, got a for loop. We've got a while loop.
A while loop, yeah, and then there's one more, forgot.
Until loop. Okay, what is the rules? When do we use which one?
I know for four, it will run. Oh my gosh, I keep on going next, so I'm just gonna excuse myself.
Not a problem. Anybody else? What is the rules?
The for is, the for is when we know. Uh, how many times we have to loop it, like for example, as you made an example earlier, that. Seven, um, students, seven student numbers, we can say for I equals. Or I in whatever number.
That's perfect, yeah. Yeah, the correct answer is exactly what you said. If you know the number of times we have to run it, for loop is the perfect one. What about a while loop?
Uh, I don't know, but I can put it in my own ways, I might stand to be corrected. It, a while is. If a condition stands until it changes, the, the pro, or whatever script that you have written must just keep going. Until a certain condition is met.
Anybody else have got a different opinion?
Um, I think it's, you do while the statement is true.
Okay, so the rule is, a while is if you want to test. Before. The loop. Until is if you want to test. After. The loop. Okay, you want an example?
When you guys say test, you mean?
Yeah, so the difference is this, a for loop counts. A while loop works like this. So I've got while. Uh, what's the format for while again? Um, I try not to remember this because it's just too, too, too much effort. So we'll do while. T is smaller than ten, do, and this is loop now. Okay, a while tests in the beginning of the loop. So it tests there. Also test, use the word test. So I'm checking if T is smaller than ten. If it's smaller than ten, da, 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 okay? In other words, if I wanted to test, I have to assign T first before I go into the loop because it tests. Before the loop. An until statement. Okay, tests at the end of the loop. So it does everything inside the loop. Okay, and then it tests and it starts later. So I, where I have to assign T there, yeah, I can assign T anything in here. Doesn't really matter. Okay, and that will still work. Okay, so, uh, un, uh, until loop is end, a while loop is beginning. Okay, these guys are interchangeable in terms of sometimes, you, you can, you can write an algorithm using either one of those. Okay, you just have to put some extra stuff in, and the while loop will work as an, and, uh, work as an until loop. You have to put some extra stuff in, and then until loop will work as a while loop. But you can think of something like a menu display. Um, so a menu display, you will typically use an until loop. So you'll go, do. Display. Menu. Da, 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 enter choice. Now, here we're supposed to spell choice. Loop. Until. Choice. Um. Equals zero. Okay, so what will happen is it'll always display the menu because it's only gonna test if you made a choice at the end of the until loop. So that's an example of a, a, a thing. The while is we do the test at the beginning. Um, while. Um, let's say, for example, employees left. Is greater than zero, do. Display. Employee. My name. Employee left. You're fired. Okay. And then we'll start with an array, so we've got. Name, and we've got da, 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 and the, all the employees in there will start that. Employees left, employees I need to fire is like a hundred. And it'll just go from hundred to one and fire all of them until it gets to the last one. Okay? But the while starts beginning, the do while starts at the end, okay? There is an important part of this and they do put, name it in the book and it's something that they say. Specifically at the testing part, okay? A loop. Has to end, okay? When we get to algorithms, we're gonna talk about looping variance, okay? But the basic principle is this. If you've got a while loop. You've got a test here. Do, loop. Or you've got an until loop, do, da, 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 da. Loop. Until, and we've got some kind of test here. Okay, this test. Has to become true at some stage, or you will never get out of this loop. It's very logical, but something to remember. Because what people love to do, and this is a very common mistake, is. We have come some kind of if statement in here. So let's say, for example, we've got a variable K. Uh, has to be smaller than teen. So we've got an if statement here, that does something. Then, and then we say K smaller, uh, K equals K plus one, and then. Um, we do, um, end if, okay? But this condition here is dependent on user input. Okay, and that input never becomes true, so this never happens. Which means this, this loop will just keep on going and going and going and going forever. And if you think that you're just dumb because you forget it, okay? There is big software, software systems like Windows, for example, that had this type of shitty bugs. Okay, it actually had this type of bugs in it. Um, big, big, very professional programmers make this mistake, so make sure that when you do a loop. That you are, that those conditions will eventually become true. Okay, it's one of the bugs that you're gonna see the most in your life. You'd be surprised how many, how, how many times you're gonna see it. Okay, so we've got the loop stuff. So, um, Quentin, I think you asked, was it Quentin or Karat that talked about arrays? Are you, are you more comfortable with arrays now and you're gonna, how are you gonna use them?
Yeah, yeah, I'm much more comfortable. I haven't said the full question, but I think this explains exactly what we need to do. To get to this solution. So, Your Honor, thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, somebody to asked about loops. Who was it? If statements, I talked about pseudocode and if statements. Okay, um, who was it? Nandi, Nandi, are you okay with if statements now or must I explain it to you? Just say thumbs up if you want me to explain it to you, please. Okay, if statements. So, um, if you think, and I'm, I'm gonna use a, a tool that I hate using, but I'm gonna use it anyway. If you think about. Um, the flow of a, of, of, of a program. Program is a set of steps. So it got lots of steps that happens, okay? Then what happens is, we have to make a choice. So you can go either this direction or you can go that direction. Or you can go that direction. Okay. That choice is an if statement. Okay, that's the concept of an if statement, is when we have to make a choice between this side. And that side. That's how we use an if statement, any place that we're going to make a choice. Okay. So, remember the whole Boolean thing. So Boolean just means yes or no, or true or false. And remember the whole computer binary thing. So, computers are very good at handling. Um, true or false, yes or no, ones and zeros. They're not very good um, at handling, handing stuff. If, if something um, is almost correct. Computer can't handle that. It confuses the hell over it. It's either correct or it's incorrect, okay? What makes AI so powerful is that it can handle the maybes. But if it's not AI, a computer doesn't like maybes. It has to be right to it, it has to be wrong. And that's exactly the principle of an if statement. An if statement says, if. If something is true. Then. Do something, do some thing. Else. Do some thing else. End if, okay. There's your commands that you need to burn. Okay. So, the principle is this, if that is true. It has to handle the first part. If that is false. It has to do the second part. That is an if statement. That is how simple it is. Okay, where it becomes complex is. They will give you, uh, Nandi, can you speak or, or don't you have the ability to speak for we all? Okay, so where it becomes funny or interesting is this. So, this is quite interesting. If I say ten is smaller than fifteen. Okay, what is that? That is a true statement. It's very easy to do. If I go fifteen is smaller than ten, that is a false statement. And that's exactly how if statement works. It's literally if. And now what we can do is, and this is where the confusion comes in, instead of there, we can just do a variable. Instead of there, we can replace it with a variable. So I can say, if A is smaller than B. Then. Do something. Let's, let's, let's put a legal command in there just for fun. Display. Fly me to the moon. To the moon. Else. Display. Sorry. You. Gonna. Go down, baby. Okay. Okay, so now what we can do is we can literally just go and say, okay, fine. Okay. Nothing's happening on my side. Sorry, this thing does it every now and then. Okay. So we can literally just go and say, but let's make A. Ten, and let's make B fifteen. What's gonna happen? A is small as ten, so it's A ten is smaller than fifteen, so it's gonna fly me to the moon. If I switch it around and I make that one. Twenty. Then this is not gonna work. Okay, so that's the basic principle. You're going to look AS, AS next. In other words, this becomes false. In other words, this statement is not true, therefore you are not gonna make it, baby. Okay. Where people are sort of struggling, I don't know, I'm assuming that's where you guys are struggling is this. If I have a command, say A smaller than B, that's easy to say if it's true or false. But what I can do is I can say A smaller than B. Or B bigger than C. I can use that. Is that the type of thing? Are you all comfortable with that type of, of thing or must I explain the difference between a disjunction? And a conjunction, in other words, or and and. So I need a thumbs up to know if I should explain, a thumbs down if you feel I shouldn't.
You may explain.
Okay, so, one, we want to com- combine a lot of stuff. So we have. That thing, which we can say is a true or false, that thing is a true or false, and we wanna sort of combine them into a single thing. Okay, so we have to, want to combine a lot of them. And what we can do is, we can use three basic operators. We can use something called a not operator. A and operator, an or operator. Okay, eventually, you're gonna call this negation. You're gonna call this um, disjunction. You're gonna call this conjunction. Okay, but for purposes of this discussion. Okay, and because we're not, we're not mathematicians. And we don't have our, our, our big noses in the air, okay? Just put my, my face back on there for you guys. Here's my face, my face is here somewhere. There's my face, okay? These three stuff, you get another one X or, but I don't think you've, you've done X or, did we do X or? And don't think we did. I think we just did um, not and and. Okay. They work as follows. Not. Just opposite. So if I start with a false. And I say not false, it becomes true. If I say not true. It becomes false, okay? Thumbs down if you don't understand that very simple concept. Okay, let's go to the next one. How about, oh, okay, to be clear, what don't you understand? How do we, how do we, how do we explain this further? I need to just some guidance in terms of what exactly you're struggling with. Um, there is a, there is a concept which I haven't really worked with a lot, and it's like this. Okay. The way to think about it is, we've got. A, a coin, there is a coin. Okay, one side of the coin is blue. The other side of that same coin, I can flip it over. Is red, okay? Ignore the middle part, just imagine I'm a really crappy, crappy um, artist, okay, which I am. Okay, so if it's blue, it's true. If it's red, it's false. Okay, so that's good or bad. You can say it's yes or no, it really doesn't matter. That one is good, that one is not so good. All that not does, all that not does, it flips a coin around. All it does is, got a blue coin. All that not does, it literally just flips it around. And then it becomes red. That's all it does. So if I start with two. I start with my coin, blue side up. And if I say not. Two, it just means flip that around, and we end up with a red coin, which is false. If I start with my red coin at the top. Which is false. And I say not false. It swatches over and becomes a true. Okay, is that working for you? Can you understand that now? Can I have a thumbs up if you are now with us? Okay, that's all the not does. It literally just takes a true and makes it a false. It makes a false, it ma- takes a false and makes it true. That's all it does. Okay, and it works with whatever's near it. So if I start with, for example, an A, which is true. Okay, I think what I'm gonna do from now on, if I say two, that means two. If I say if, it means false, okay? So if I start, 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 start from the A, that's true, and I say not A. What will it be? It becomes not, exactly like a math. True, and that is equal to false. Okay. Now the ones that we are struggling with. And. And all. There's two ways to approach this. The one is something called the truth table. And the one is to understand the difference. Like you will need to eventually understand the truth table. Now, what an and do is, I've got one value here. And I've got one value here, and I'm gonna get tell you, these values together. Is gonna result in something. So it basically takes two values, turns it into a single value. It takes two values here, turns it into a single value. Think of mathematical, um. Uh, uh, think of terms of math, math simplification. So what an or and does, it takes two values, and on the other side comes out a single value, it takes two values and on the side come a single value. Okay, the difference between the two is this, an and, okay, comes back. With the two. If both left and right side is true. So if left and right is true, then it becomes true. Okay. An or becomes true if the left side or the right side is true. So that one is an if, but because it's an or, we end up with a true. So let's work through some of them. Anybody that wants to quickly do this? Um, so if I say, for example, I start and say false and true. Karat, you wanna try this one? What, what would, what would the outcome be?
False.
It will be false, that's great. Nandi, are you with us? Okay, that will be a false because they both have to be true. What about? False or true?
True.
It'll be true because one of them is true. What about false and false or false?
False.
False, okay, so that's how it works. So now they can give us a very complex thing. Now they can give us, um, I've got. Um, A is bigger than B and C is smaller than. One or B plus C equals ten. Okay, so all we need to do, if you wanted to solve this, this little riddle there, okay? I'm gonna write it out slightly nicer for you guys, okay? So you have, let me just write this out slightly nicer that you can actually follow. So I've got a riddle, the rules say A bigger than B. And. Okay, by the way, I get lazy, so I just, and actually has a symbol that looks like this, and or is got a symbol like this. So when I do this, I don't write the and out, I just go, I just use the symbols. But for now, I'll write it out just for you guys. So say, 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 thank you, Yakuwes, okay? B plus C equals ten. Okay, so the rules is that your, uh, the, the comparison operators. Okay. You're gonna do first, and then you're gonna do the, the other two. That's the rule, okay? So we first have to figure out that one, that one, and that one. Okay, so let's, let's make A, doesn't really matter, but we make it. B is a five, let's make C equals um, two, and let's make, um, that's fine, okay? So we do that first. So we literally just go replace everything. So we go ten is bigger than five and. And if you wanna do that to make it simpler, so you know that you have to do that first. C is smaller than one, is C smaller than one? I corner, so that's a false. Or. B plus C, B plus C is ten, plus fifteen. Is that equal to ten? No, so that becomes a false. Okay, let's just, uh, let me just do this. Work through it slowly. Guys, if you don't follow, immediately stop me and we'll go back. I don't know why this thing is slow today, it's a silent lit. I don't like you anymore, so today I'm gonna be slow. Okay, B plus C equals ten, we have replaced the B in there, we said B is five. We said C is two. Five plus two equals ten. That ends up being a false, okay? Got an or there, got a false over there, gonna and over here, go, is ten bigger than five? Yes, it's a two. Okay, I can already see what the answer is going to be. Now, let me just check something quickly in the book. Does I sometimes forget the sequ- the, the sequence? Okay, does anybody know what the precedence is between an and and or? Okay, precedence, yes, no, maybe, no clue. No clue, okay, I think the or.
I think it's. Is it not, it's N O A, so I think it's not or and. Last time I checked, let me double check.
Page fifty four. Fifty four, there you go, let's have a look. Um, still on, where are we? Selection fifty four, okay, so this always happens first, your relationships operators happen first. And then your logical, yours not and all, okay, so that's the precedence. So we do exactly like in math. Is there not? No, there's not a not, so we don't have to worry, okay? Is there a? There you go. So, there's no not, so we have no problem. Then the next one is and, so we do and first. T and F. Becomes?
If.
If. Or. If. F or F becomes?
If.
There we go, there's your result. So this. They can put in an IF statement. Something, something, something. Else, something else. End if. That's our IF look. Are you guys happy with how the IF now works? Do you understand why? Okay. So. Um, so what they do is they've given us something called an IPO table. They've given us, what is, what do they call the other one? Come on.
Trace table.
They gave us a trace table. Okay, now you need to know this because they, that's what they use, that's their principle, okay? But all these are, is just methods of running through the application. So the IPO, remember, we talked about the abstraction. Okay, that is your first level. It just helps you with the abstraction to convert from your abstraction into an algorithm. Okay, your trace table is to test your application, to test everything. That's what it does. So you're going step for step for step, and at every step, you're just filling in the variables here. Okay, and, and, and you will then test it, okay, like that. In real life, I don't know anybody that actually uses trace tables, but it's a good tool to learn. It's a good tool to learn. Now, the, um. The, where we go here? What you would do here is, there is a special one, and that is if you do like an IF statement, you can add one that says result of IF. Okay, because the IF creates basically a true or false here. And you can use that true or false here to determine what happens next. Okay, um. Generally, to be honest with you. When I evaluate. Code like this. Okay, because you would just start this on the computer, I would just, I actually should show you the, the application that we use. But the applications would actually just put the values right next to this and take it away and you could just see it. But that's a basic principle. Okay, so we've done for loops, we've done while loops, we could do until loops, dot IF loops. Is there any other things that we need to talk about?
IF statement, nested IF.
Nest if. Okay. So what's difficult about nested ifs? What's hard about nested ifs? Come on, tell me. Anybody? I'm waiting. Okay. Nested ifs, you should avoid like the plague. If you can do something without an nested if, don't do it without an nested if. They are logically very difficult to follow. They're very difficult to work with. Okay, so what I typically do, and this is now again a real life problem versus. Education or testing or whatever problem. In real life, we will just use two, two IF statements. So what you would do is you'll do an IF statement, okay? Um, a lot of, a lot of, um, um. Uh, things has got an ELSE IF statement in, but even if you don't have that. Okay. What you can do. Is, um, you can, if you set this, if you set your test properly. You can use two exclusive tests. And most of the times, as long as this test and that test. Um. Don't conflict, you're going to end up with an If Else statement, an nested IF statement. But because they are going to ask you an IF statement in the exam, they are going to ask you one, we might as well discuss it. Okay. All that nested IF statement is, an nested IF statement just means that I've got an IF statement. And then as part of my IF, I've got a second IF statement inside here. Okay. And I might have an ELSE here, I might have an End IF here. I might have another Else here. And then I might have some other stuff here, and then I might have an End IF here. Okay, I could have this IF statement, doesn't have to be here, it could also be here. Okay. Here is the secret to IF statements or nested IF statements is. You want to at all times know which IF statement is related to which End IF. Okay, that's one of the reasons we have this indenting thing that I, that we all do. Is that we know that if the IF here is related to the IF end here, okay? Otherwise, it gets very, very confusing very quickly. Okay, so you want to know which ELSE statement is related to which IF statement. So typically what we do is we align your END, your ELSE and your IF. So this IF, this ELSE and this IF, because they're aligned here. Means that they're part of the same IF statement. So it's literally an IF statement within an IF statement, within an IF statement. You can do another IF here, it doesn't really matter, okay? But can you see how it becomes very complicated to follow? Because what happens is, I might have. A condition here that say A is smaller than 10, and then another condition is A is smaller than five. Okay, so it tests the first condition. If that is true, then it goes in there, then it tests the second condition. If that is true, only then does it run here. Then if this is not true, it'll run this part. Can you see how complicated it becomes? Now you've got A is smaller than 10, it's smaller than five. So in other words, if it's between, if it's anything between smaller than five. Then it'll run that, but if it's now smaller than 10 and, and big or equal to five, between five to nine, it will run this part. Okay, and now, but if A is bigger than 10, so if A is 10 up to wherever, then it'll run that part. Okay, you can see that true, then that true, then it does that, that true, then that false, and that does that. That true or that false, then it does that. Okay, so it becomes really complicated. And that's why I would do something like this, I would, I would just go IF. A is smaller than five. Okay, in this case, I can just use smaller than five, then do whatever I need to do. Okay, um, and if, then I'll go IF, and we have this wonderful thing called an AND statement, and I can go. If A is greater or equal to five. And A is smaller than 10. Then da, 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 da. End if. And if. A is greater or equal to 10. Then do this. I think personally, this, and you guys can agree with me or not, this is easier to read than that convoluted shit there. I'm sorry, I shouldn't swear about that, that, the things there. Okay, if they ask you to do it with a, with a nested statement, do it. If you can avoid it, try and avoid it because this is much easier to follow, it's much easier to write, it's much easier to test. Okay, because this one you have to test, yeah. Okay, yes. I'm so sorry.
So does it actually matter or the most important thing is how you actually, uh. Not really structured, but how your, your actual algorithm or pseudocode is correct?
So in, in real life, it does matter. Um, for this subject, it doesn't. Okay, um, so. As long as the result that you're getting is the same. Um, it's, it will be correct, okay? But read your question correctly. They might ask you specifically to use a nested IF statement, then you don't have a choice. But if they don't ask you, um, to use a nested IF statement. Um, then just use the other method, okay? In real life, it does matter. Okay? Because we have something called a stack. Okay, a stack is like, let's call it program. Memory. Okay, so. The, this IF statement. Okay, when you convert that into. Um, when you convert that into programming, actual programming thing is going to be something, something like that. Then it's going to be a test and it's going to jump. And there's going to be a test here, and then it's going to jump. And then it's going to be a test here, and then it's going to jump. Okay, so this will be translated to something that looks like this. Okay. This. Will be translated into something that looks like da, 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 a test here, da, da, da. Something there with a test here, which now refers, that test refers to that test, and this one. Does that and it just gets very complicated. Because this translation in the computer. Okay, this actually uses more memory. Memory and it's slower. Than that. In general. Okay, so in real life, it does matter, but for this, it doesn't matter. There's a lot of places where we use nested IF statements, we use it all the time. Okay, but, um, if you can avoid it, avoid it, um, because remember. And it's also something that didn't really emphasize in, in this, but it's something that you guys need to understand is when you're writing code, you're writing code not just for yourself, you're writing code for other people as well. Okay. There is, in, in life. There's nothing that we really accomplish on our own. We always work with other people to accomplish something, okay? And programming is no exception. It's very hard to really write any software of significance on your own. You always work with other people. So your code that you're writing, you have to write so other people can understand it. And nested IF statements is one of those things that's hard to understand, which means you make it hard for other people to understand. If you're doing it as a joke, or just because it's funny, that's fine. But remember that we generally work with other people, and because you work with other people, that's one of the reasons we have comments in our code. One of the reasons we have, um, we, we avoid complicated, um, algorithms. If your algorithm is too complicated, then it's difficult for people to understand. Guys, how, how are you guys with sub procedures and functions? Are you guys happy with that? You guys good with that? Okay.
Okay, if you have time, if you do have time, um, may we go through it, please?
Okay. So sub procedures and functions and modules is actually very, very, very easy to understand. It's both very complicated and very easy, okay? Okay, remember, when we started, we talked about a concept called abstraction. So. Functions. Procedures. App. That's what they all, okay. Module, all the module is, is just a collection of procedures and functions, so you don't have to worry about that, it's just a collection. Collection, okay? So the way that we use a procedure and a function. Is if there's something that we do, that we do repetitively, we do it a lot of times, okay? Then, um, what we would do is we'll turn that into a function or a procedure. Instead of writing the code over and over and over again, we just write a procedure to do that, or we just write a function to do that. Um, depending on who you're working with. Okay, and the group that you're working with. Um, some people go as far as and says, if you use a piece of code twice. You create, you create a function for it. Okay, some people are not that bad, they go three times, okay, but literally. So let's go back to the example we did earlier. So we did the example. The way we said, okay, what we're going to do is we have this piece of, we have this piece of code that goes. Display. Enter name. And then we're going to enter the name. And then we go display. Enter. Employee. Number. And then we enter the employee number. Then we go display. Enter crap and then enter another lot of nonsense, okay? So this is a lot, lot of stuff that you need to collect every time, okay? Now, one of the principles is, again, remember that we are going to work with other people. So one of the things that we try to do is that, if you look, look at a piece of code, okay? And you work in an editor. You want everything that's related to each other that you need to know on one page. Now, if I have something like this, that's got a hundred, say, for example, there's 20 lock items in here. Okay. Then it's very difficult to, to, to follow the logic in here. Because I have like a for loop, then I've got all these things here, then I've got a next down here, and then I've got a test loop here. An if then, and then I've got another for loop here, and I've got a, and it, and it just gets, keeps on going. So what you would typically do is you could say, okay, you know what? How about I simplify that? Okay, so instead of having 20 lines of code there, I have one line of code called call. Enter. Employee. Data. And then I'll, I'll put the, the data in there, and then that one call. Does all these little items here in one shot for me. Okay, that is the idea between a function. And a procedure. Okay, it's to extract, it's to make this main program simpler and easier to run. Okay, most main programs, most main programs in applications are literally 10 to 20, 20 lines of code long. Because everything happens in a function. It literally starts up and calls seven, three functions to set up, and then it calls the function, the main loop, and then. Then it's done, and the main program is done, the rest are all done with functions. Okay, so a function is a very important concept, procedures are a very important concept, it's a way to abstract, it's a way to simplify. Your, the way that you work with stuff. So instead of having 20 lines of code, you'll have one line of code, and that calls another function or a procedure. Which has the 20 lines of the 30, whatever. Um, typically, we're looking at 3,000 lines of code, but you get the idea. I mean, three lines, it's like nothing. Okay, so let's go back to the concept, the two, two main concepts that we're talking about. We're talking about a function. And a procedure. Anybody want to tell me what the difference between the two are? When I think in the book, they call it a sub procedure. What is the difference between the two? Guys, you should just say, it's this, come on, quick, quick, quick. I want to get into, to, to, to bit more detail.
Well, a function executes or calculates something, not sure about a procedure.
Okay, procedure can also, yeah.
I'm saying a function calculates or executes something, easy, maybe uh some combined test one, assignment one, assignment two, test two mark. But I'm not sure about a a procedure.
Procedure can do exactly the same thing. Benton?
Uh so a function gives a function can return something, but the procedure only saves something. That's why I I I think that's it.
Okay, in the in the book, that would probably be close to correct, okay, in reality, it's not quite true. But um but in the book, it will correct, so in a function, the function ends with return. A a procedure ends with end sub. Okay, so this is what happens, if I declared a function. Say for example, add num. Value one, value two. And then I can go return value one plus value two. So. This is irritating, okay, there you go. And I'm gonna clear this thing just now. Okay. The way I can use a function is I can say r equals function name. Add num. Ten plus twenty. Okay, so what happens is this number and that number gets sent through to here where it goes. So that becomes a ten, that goes a twenty, that comes a ten, that comes a twenty. Adds them all up, gets a thirty, puts a thirty and replaces that whole thing with thirty and now we've got r equals thirty, okay? So it returns a value. A procedure doesn't do that, so you can't say r equals and then put a procedure name in there. Okay, it'll just give you an error. So a procedure can also do stuff, exactly like a function. Okay. The difference is that a procedure, you can't do this with. You can't take the procedure, make it, make it, put it in there and expect it to return a function that I can then directly use in a variable. It doesn't do that, right? So the book says um a function returns a value, a procedure doesn't. Okay, and you'll see why I say it's not strictly true at the moment. But for our purposes, that's a that's a difference between function. But other than that, exactly the same, the function's got a lot of fu- it's got a got a got a lot of got a lot of um commands in. Procedure's got a lot of commands and the only difference is a function ends with return and the return sends data back and you can take where you would use a variable um on the right hand side. Um you can uh put a function in, okay? See if I can clear this. So, so 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 we already discussed a function. And we said a procedure does the same thing as a function. Um guys, just confirm with me, the it's sub is is the um. The declaration of a procedure, am I correct? I need to yay or nay or whatever, let's have a look. Go to the yay, okay, so sub. So this got returned. This is end sub, okay? The functions you can use within a sub and a procedure is exactly the same functions that you would use in an algorithm. You can think of a function and a sub procedure as a named algorithm.
Oh, is this what they meant um on the assignment? When like they would ask questions where they explicitly say they want a pseudocode or an algorithm, like would this be?
Yeah, so, yeah, pseudocode, okay, pseudocode.
I know it is a language to just um help us articulate logic, right?
Oh, so so, okay, I I I'm gonna uh uh go like this, okay, so pseudocode is the stuff that we've been learning, that's the way that you set it up. Algorithm has a very specific meaning within the book.
Okay.
What is the al- what is the say, what is the algorithm, an algorithm has to have a beginning.
Right.
It has to have a body. It has to have an end, it has to have an input. It has to have an output, there's the there's this thing there that's telling you.
The display, right?
Yeah, the this input in display also, display, it has to have.
Maybe use, yeah, it's used tilt for comment.
Okay, and it has to have a name, okay? So when they say they want an algorithm, make sure that it has all these things.
Oh, okay.
When they say they want pseudocode.
Yeah.
You can short circuit, you don't have to put all that in.
Oh, we don't have to put all of that in?
Yeah, so so if they want an algorithm, you have to go put the name in, then put the in the thing, do the end. Put in the comments there, make sure that there's an eh eh display and an output and everything. If they say they want pseudocode, you don't need to put all that in, you just put in what you need.
Really? I had no idea that was stressing literally for nothing, what?
Okay.
Okay.
So if they say, so for example, a function, and that's the sort of the thing with the function, but when you do a function, okay? We don't need all that, with a function, we have a name because we have to have a name, otherwise we don't have a name. Name, function, actually, you know what? Wedding. March. Okay. Variable weight of bride. And variable length of, I don't know. Uh um dress. Hey. And then now in a normal function, you would have to have like a whole body and an end and an input and an output. With a wedding, you don't, because these already does your input for you. So I've got if um. Where is it, if uh bride weight is bigger than a hundred kilogram, then play wedding march, big, fat and white. Else, just.
Oh my god, guys, class is so interesting, I love it here.
Okay, and then it's a function, so it will return is the um. Time, okay, so in a function. You would, you don't need all that, you can literally just get straight into just the, just the the piece of pseudocode that you need to get this done. Okay, um where if you have an algorithm, it has to have an beginning and an end and all kinds of stuff that, okay?
Hmm, interesting.
So it's very, yeah, so it's very important that you have, when you write a function, there will always be a return statement. When you write a procedure or sub procedure. Okay, sub procedure. Marine one. Reference. Um Obama. Referenced. And you have something, 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 and then that will end with end sub. So these two go together and these two go together.
Function return, okay, and sub.
Sub, sub. Okay, so they they go to, if you've got a function that returns something as part of the function. And you've got a sub that that basically runs something and then just comes back, it doesn't necessarily return a value. Doesn't have to return a value while the function is forced to return a value.
Hmm.
Again, in real life, they're very, very close to each other. There are some programming languages that don't make any distinction. Some programming languages appreciate in a function, this is same thing. The only difference is the procedure is a function that just doesn't return anything. So in terms, instead of saying return some kind of value. If you want to make it a sub procedure, just take the value away and then it's a then it's a procedure, okay? So um something, so you're gonna see that, so don't get confused when that happens. But for now, for this pseudocode, you have a procedure which doesn't return something. And we have a function which has got a return value that it returns. Now, remember, we started off with saying that. We've got an input, got some very complete, we've got a thread here. And then we've got an output, who knows what a thread is?
I have no idea, you have to tell us.
It stands, it stands for flippin ridiculous electronic device.
Guys, okay, you have to tell us what that's about.
I just, it's just about the computers, it's afraid.
Flippin, we call it, okay, wow.
Okay, so so we have the input and we have like your computer and then you've got your output. Now, what we have is we have the same same thing with a procedure and a function. So the she just also got an input. Does something with the input and then the problem is here is it has an output, but it doesn't necessarily return a value. Okay, so for all our purposes, we're gonna go, okay, we're gonna just take that part away. And we're gonna say a function has got an input. And it's got an output. Now this inputs. We call. Pa. Param. It's called parameters. So when we define a function, function. One. Parameter one. Parameter two, all this is, is that.
Hmm, okay, I see.
So that's the way that we send information to a function, is through parameters. Okay, there's other ways, but for the purposes of this specific um class, the PLA class. You send information to a function via a parameter, okay? You can think of other ways as well, so I mean, you can think of of, for example, um say, for example, we write it to a file. And then here we just read it from the file and we basically pass the information through as well. But the simplest way is literally just to send it via a parameter. That parameter is then our fun- is then our parameters, that's basically our uh input, okay? So in a in a normal algorithm, we have to define the variables. In a function, the variable get gets passed, so we can use those variables directly. So you can literally go display, say for example, Peter. And then uh var. Param one, display. Well, this is a function, Sarah. Variable. Param two, and they will return. Um so for example, Peter plus Sarah.
I think so.
Okay. So. We have the input parameters, we do something, we have a return, and all functions have that. A procedure, we literally would just take that away, so we could do the same with a procedure. Sorry, I need to just remember this block, otherwise I'm gonna. I don't, I generally don't bother learning this stuff because um normally when they do the test, at somewhere in the test, they're gonna tell they're gonna give you an example and examples that have a procedure and a function, and you just read the the format of there, but.
It's one of those, I see, no, I get it, I totally get it, yeah, okay.
But let's go, so we've got two, we've got say um variable param one. Variable P two. And then you can do exactly the same. Da 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 da, var param one, display. Da da da, V I R P two. And end sub and that is different to that, which means it's not returning a thing. So when we call a function, we go a equals function name. Parameters. Let's say P one, P two. When we call a procedure, we go call procedure name. Parameter one, parameter two. So that's how you call a procedure, that's all you call a function. Okay, because the function always returns something, you have to assign it to something. Of course, if you have a procedure, you just call the procedure, it doesn't bring back any values, okay? So thumbs up and then we can get into reference and value parameters. Okay, if you don't understand, thumbs down, so we can just go back and just work through this slowly. Okay. Hello, Mr. Marvin, I haven't seen your thumbs up yet, so, hi. Okay, so when we send variables into a function or into a procedure, okay? So let's make the two one here, we can send it in two different ways. The one is pass by value. Pause by value. And the other one is pause by reference. Anybody that can tell me the difference between these two?
Pause by value, pause by a reference.
Yes.
I understand it, but I cannot see it, that is so crazy. Um obviously, pass by reference, it would be as though we are referencing from another existing variable or whatever. Right, and then by value is that we would have assigned a value to to something, to a function or a variable. What? Okay, wait, no. I don't know if I'm making sense. Copy reference, yeah, wait, copy.
Okay, so.
Oh wait, so reference is kind of like installed, so we just like reference. Reference, you know, like hit that one next door, and then the value is that we would actually duplicate a value. Like would interact with the value for it to be a copy, and then references that we point to, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so that's the difference. So when I do, say, for example, I call. Two. Ten. Comma twenty. Okay, this will not work. This will bomb out.
Of course, yes.
Okay. Ten, it can do, because I can copy a ten in there. Twenty is not a variable. So I can't point to another variable, I can't point to a twenty. So this will not work. Okay. So we say that pass by value. We copy. Pass by reference. We point to. And we can sort of think, um, I, I can't come up with a good analogy, but we'll, we'll try and think of, of, of what we can do, so. Say, for example, we have a function that says. A equals ten, B equals twenty. Okay, these are my original variables, okay? And I say call. Two. And then I go A comma B. Now, let's define that procedure quickly here. And you'll see the difference very, very quickly when we, like, when we work, when we work through it. We say that. Var P one equals. Var P one plus one. The reference. P one equals reference. P one plus one. Okay. End sub. So I'm gonna use a technique, it's slightly different to, to the way that they run it. Okay, so we've got our little table here. And we've got our variables, so we've got variable A, we've got variable B, we've got var P one. We've got var P two. Okay, so we can run this command now, so we can run command. Just gonna A B. Var P one. Reference P one, okay. So we say A becomes, A is basically ten here. Twenty, so ta da ta, twenty. Then call two A B, so now it's gonna call and it's gonna call this up to the top. So we're gonna go here and it's gonna be, A is still gonna be at this point, A is gonna be. Ten. Because we passed ten in there. And B is gonna be twenty. And it's gonna set var, var P one as a ten, and it's gonna set ref P one, P one as a twenty. Now, this is where things get interesting. That one is a copy, so as I say, var P one is gonna be var P one plus one, so we're gonna take that ten, we're gonna add one. Then we're gonna do the second one, reference P one, reference P one is twenty plus one, twenty one. But that. Causes B also to be changed at the same time. Can you see the difference? That one. Passed by value, var copies to that value, and this value is. Yes.
Sorry to disturb, I have to leave, but could we have the recording made available for the rest of the lesson?
I don't know if, did we record anything? I don't know.
Yeah, it's saying it's being recorded.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I'll, I'll make us, I'll make one, I'll make an exception today, normally I don't do that.
Thank you so much, thank you so, so much, thank you so much for the help, it's really terrified everything.
Okay, so you've, you've got the variable here, so you can see what happened now. That variable points to that variable there. So anything I do to that variable, actually, that should be a ref, sorry about that, just fix that quickly. Any changes that I make to this variable automatically gets made to this variable. Um, now, if you were in the Linux class earlier, we, we talked about the link, is that is literally the same as a hard link.
Right, I was about to ask also.
B equals reference, P two equals, and then whatever the value is. Okay, and it doesn't matter which one of those two I change. That value is gonna change.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's effectively the same value. That is a difference between a reference value and a pass by value. Value, if I now come back here. Now this returns here and I say, display. A comma B. A comma B, what's gonna happen is, A, which we passed here. Is a ten, is gonna come back as a ten and it's gonna stay a ten. But B now changed. Because this was passed by reference, this was passed by value. Can you see that one now changed its value, or this one's value did not change? Okay, that is a difference between pass by value and pass by reference. Okay, that's when I said earlier, say, telling me that you, that, um, uh. A procedure does not return a value is not strictly correct, because if you pass by reference, I can definitely turn it, return a value. But the book says that it returns a value, so it returns a value. See, because I can change the value and therefore I can pass information back and forward. Okay, so what is the usefulness of this? So you can already see part of the usefulness of this, okay? Um. But, um, in reality, and in big programs, we, we, we prefer, we prefer. Pause. By value, okay, what is the usefulness? Of pass. By reference. Anybody that wants to venture, but why do we even have pass by reference? Why would this have to be always pass by value? Quentin?
Uh, so, oh, pass by value, the usefulness of it is the ability for it to store a new value.
Okay, and, and pass by reference?
Um, okay. Sorry, that was pass by reference, or my son must do this.
Anybody else? Yeah? Yes.
I'm spinning from the hip here.
Fine.
But, uh, pass by a reference with that not also be able to bring back a, a string value?
It brings back values, so what you can do, and this is the, the place where it's most useful, if you're doing, if you're working with very small values. Um, if you're working with one, two, seven bytes of value, to copy that value onto a procedure and bring it back is. It's a minor operation, it's, it's almost nothing, okay, but let's imagine we did this. We did, say, zero two. Two thousand, zero two. Three thousand. So now we've got six million records here. Okay. Now, in today's computer, computer world, six million record is not that much, it's about six megs, well, in this case, it'll be, be about. Forty, but forty eight megs of data, so that's forty megs of data. Okay, now imagine every time that you call a function or a procedure, now you have to copy forty megs of data. To the procedure. Have it do, do its job and then send back forty megs of data. That wants it finished. Okay, now that's okay when you call this one or two or twice a second, but imagine you have to call that a thousand times a second. Now you're sending forty. Thousand megs, you're setting forty gigs of data per second. Um, your whole computer is, the whole day, all it's gonna do is. Copy data in memory, the whole freaking day. Okay, computers are fast, so they can, they can copy about four hundred gigs a second. Okay, so you can do, you can, you can still go further, but about ten percent of your computer's processing is gonna be used literally. Just to cop data, copy data around. So what we do is with big structures like this, instead of copying the whole structure, we just send it with a pointer. Okay. We call that pass by reference. And then we just work with the original structure. And now we only have to pass that pointer through, and the pointer. On a normal or modern computers about eight bytes. So eight bytes versus. Um, forty gigabytes. I think it makes a difference. Just a small one. Okay. So that is one of the applications, there's other reasons as well, but that's one of the big applications, is that when you work with big structures. Um, passing by reference, you start thinking about that, um, a lot of times. Um, so for example, Python only passes by reference, it doesn't pass by value at all. Um, other languages can do pass by reference, but, but generally you have a pass by value, you have a pass by reference. Um, and what they sometimes do, so for example, what Python does is. It passes by reference at all times, so it does something very cool, so what it does is, when you call a function. Okay, and you send it in, so value one, value two, okay? What it does is, when I say, when I then call that function, let's call that function function one. In Python, I say function one and I call it with, say, for ten or twenty, okay? I said it always uses passes by reference, but what now happens is says, okay, I'm trying to put in ten in there, and if it says, sees that. The pass by reference won't work, then it switches automatically in the background to pass by value. It, it understands it, so, um, for example. You can do this as well, so for example, I do this, I say, call function one. Call it with A comma B. Okay, now what happens is. It uses a reference to that, so then I say, value one equals. Um, say, value two plus three, okay? Now the thing happens is, value two is passed by reference, in other words, it doesn't create a new variable, it just references that variable. But value one is now a problem, okay, because we don't want to edit the original value. So then it automatically creates a value, value there, but it doesn't create it when you call it. So it's a bit smarter in terms of handling that, so that whole thing about worrying about you copying the statistics to make, you don't worry about it, you just pass it through. And then the, the, in the background, Python will, will automatically manage and use this little copy, and that's what it possibly needs to copy, it doesn't copy. It only creates a new variable, it only makes a copy when it needs a copy, if it doesn't need a copy, it just refers to the original. To the original variables. So computers, so the, the guys are very smart, eh? Very, very smart, I think that's about it for tonight. I don't think we have, I think we covered most of the things. Um, I hope you guys are doing well, you can use that, that, um. Quiz is still available, you can go through it a couple of times, I see there's a lot of duplications. But it's a good quiz just for. Um, just to see where you are in terms of what you can remember. Okay, is there any other questions before we leave?
Uh, I agree with, uh, no, no question. Uh, I just wanna say thank you a lot for all the valuable input. And then also, thank you so much for making time for us, especially because it's your birthday, and then a very happy birthday to you as well.
Uh, thank you very much.
Well, happy birthday, happy birthday. And thank you very much, sir, for the assistance, it really, it really went a long way for, for me personally.
I hope you, I hope you get, give the context, so Kenzani, we spoke about it at length the other day. Um, a lot of times you just need context and you can figure out why these things now they fit together.
Right, thank you so much, and happy, happy birthday. Um, and have a good night, thank you everyone for joining.
Denzani, I'm still worried about your, your, your thinking about how to convert something to, to. To, to an algorithm, how do you think?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that one, it's just the for loop and until loop, um. Structure, I don't know how to think about it.
Okay, have you, have you, have you thought about it now or not?
Um, if you have time, we could just quickly look at. How I can be able to identify. Um, what type of loop it is. I, I, the thing is, I, I get it, but I don't when I have to do it. And then I cannot explain why and what it is that I don't understand.
Okay, so, so I don't think you have to worry too much about it.
Oh, okay.
You can use any one of them. All of them can do the same thing. Okay?
Oh, okay.
You don't have to use a for loop, you don't have to use a while or until loop, okay? Um, they are just conveniences, so you can do exactly the same that you do with a for loop, with a while or a until loop, okay? The for loop is just a convenience to do it.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't really matter, so if you, if you did your algorithm. And you did your algorithm and the algorithm is working, and you did, and you used the while loop, don't, don't need to use a for loop.
Okay, oh, I didn't know, okay.
It's just that, um, what's, what's handy about it is because the for loop was designed to run a certain number of times, okay? It's, it simplifies it, but it's exactly the same as math, okay? You can use the complicated thing and solve it with a complicated way, or you can recognize an easier way and use the easier way. Okay, but you don't have to use the easy way, you can have to use the difficult way, it's the same here. You use the one that you're comfortable with, if you started off with a while loop. Um, you use the while loop, if you use the while loop and go, oh, I should have used an until loop, you decide if you've got time to, to change it to an until loop, otherwise you leave it exactly like it is.
Oh.
Not gonna make your program any less valuable in terms of. Um. They're not gonna pull marks because you used a for loop instead of a while loop or the other way around.
Oh, okay, all right, that's very helpful, thank you for that.
Don't worry, as, as long as you understand the concepts of, of a loop.
Okay.
Then you're okay, you know, um, it's just that, you know, you're going, you're going to save. Say, four or five lines of code, and your logic's gonna look better because you used the for instead of an until or a while, but other than that, they're the same.
Okay.
Okay, but, yeah, but so the principle that we normally use is exactly that, if it's something. That we know the number of times that you're going through it before the time. We, we prefer using a, a while loop. It is, if it's something that we're gonna test before the time, in other words, um, we have the variable, the variables already been set up, we wanna test it before we go into the loop.
Mm hmm.
Then we use the, the while loop, if we all wanna test at the end of the variables, in other words, the variable that we're gonna test is only really available at the end of the loop, then we use the. Um. The, the, the until loop, but. But if you don't wanna use until loop and you use a while loop, what you do is you just force declare the variable before the while and then it's also gonna work.
Oh, it's also gonna work, okay.
Okay, you need to just think in terms of your. Um, the format, I prefer a while loop, so I tend to use while loops, I don't really like the until loops, so I do that more, I just use a. Uh, a while loop all the time instead of using an until loop. Um, but the, the format, the, the action, action algorithm is gonna change depending which loop you use, as long as your algorithm works out, it's gonna be fine.
Hmm, okay. Hmm, okay, all right.